Everybody enjoying the cool weather?
It's nice.
It's nice to take your time to walk your car.
It is nice.
I feel like you need to throw something over your head. It is good.
Yep, it is.
Alright, thirty seconds out. We run like trains around here, well like trains used to around here. The days of the conductor hopping out and checking his pocket watch and then being right on time are over.
Or monitor.
Alright. I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House City Council for today's September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The time is now six o'clock. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Paul Hickey.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Dick Jackson. We have a four.
Thank you. Alright, will you please stand up here able and join me in a word prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today as members of a community that we hold dear. We ask for your wisdom as we reflect on the history of our city, for patience and insight as we consider the matters at hand, and for courage and stewardship as we plan for the future of the City of White House. In your name we pray. Amen. Join me in the pledge of the American flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We're about ready to take that show on the road. Pretty good. Alright, so that moves us to item D, presentations. On the agenda was a presentation for officer recognition, but as sometimes happened, those officers were pulled off on a stop. Are they still?
We've still got one out of them.
We still, uh, I see that, okay. Alright, we'll hold off on that. We certainly won't miss it. So that takes us to item D two, New Creations Foundations Incorporated. Uh, VP and COO David Van Busker is here to tell the city what his organization does and the services available through them.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
David Van Busker and currently, uh, Marshall, Texas, four one four Estra Street. Um, soon to be a resident of White House, Texas, as we have a closing date for our house on the twentieth.
Oh, good.
Looking forward to being a part of your community.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you. So, on behalf of New Creation and our president and founder Greg Fleck, definitely want to say thank you for the opportunity. Just a few statistics quickly, there's twenty-one million Americans that suffer from addiction, but only ten percent receive treatment. Of course, that's what New Creation is. We are a twelve-month residential faith-based drug and alcohol recovery center. In nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand seventeen, more than seven hundred thousand Americans died from some type of a drug overdose. Those statistics increased by twenty-nine point four percent just in the year two thousand twenty during the COVID epidemic. The amount of people that are addicted to drugs and alcohol began using drugs before they were the age of eighteen years old or tried alcohol for the first time before the age of eighteen years old. Some, some of the other statistics that are pretty staggering is a hundred and thirty Americans on a daily basis die from opioid overdose. About four, now these statistics were generated in two thousand eighteen, so this is specifically for the year two thousand seventeen. It said four hundred and ninety-four thousand Americans over the age of twelve years old are regular heroin users. Over the age of twelve. I started smoking marijuana when I was nine years old. This month, I celebrate eighteen years of being clean and sober. So, I understand how that works, uh, as far as somebody at that age. It, it sounds so incomprehensible, somebody the age of twelve years old using heroin. It, it just sounds ridiculous to me. But so what our program does is, like I said, we are a twelve-month program. Of course, the reason that we're a twelve-month program is because when you look at the state of long-term addiction or generational addiction, somebody that's been using drugs for five, ten, or fifteen years, you're not gonna get that problem solved in three months or in just a six-month type program. Uh, we encourage those programs, but twelve months, we try to deal with the whole person. One of the reasons that we are a faith-based program is we believe that restoring the moral conscience back to a higher power, restoring the conviction towards God is what really helps. A lot of times, perpetuated drug addiction, people no longer fear civil authority. They're stripped of such a moral conscience, um, they're not afraid of incarceration. Uh, in most cases, they're actually used to it. Um, so our approach is that if we can restore a higher conscience to a greater authority, then we have a better chance of getting somebody recovered in long-term recovery. As far as, um, knowing that you will one day answer to your Creator, um, it has a little bit more weight than possibly what the chief could impose or what the judge might impose. And so that's, that's part of our approach is restoring the moral conscience. Drug addiction strips the moral conscience. It strips the ability of conviction to make proper decisions. And so we spend a lot of time working with that aspect of the person. We have two campuses, one for men and one for women. Uh, we call them campuses, uh, because it is a re-education process. We call our program participants students, again, because it is an educational process. We are re-educating people on how to do life, um, properly. We also work with what is called the Texas Jail Project, which is another five oh one C three, um, that they filter through cases through the courts that, um, try to determine who's a good fit for our program versus incarceration. Some people do need to be incarcerated. Uh, there was a time in my life that was the only thing that, that got me to stop and to see what I was doing. But the jail systems are crowded, um, with a lot of people that have a drug problem and don't necessarily need long-term incarceration. They need, they need some help, proper help. Um, I think the statistic was somewhere in the area of eighty or eighty-five percent of people that are incarcerated today has something to do with, uh, either directly related to drugs or, or indirectly related to drugs of some form. So, if we can get to that aspect, um, we can, we can help with the jail systems. We are recognized as a parole facility for the state of Texas and, um, currently working with all the magistrates here in Smith County, uh, judges, of course, all the parole and probation. So, yeah, that, that is what we do. And, uh, just thank you for the opportunity to present that, uh, to the city council. And, uh, are we open for questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is there any questions that I could answer for you?
I just got one thing. I, I often heard, and I'm not in law enforcement, never have been, but that drugs, dope addiction can comprise almost eighty percent of, uh, offenses, a crime. It's, it's just such a chronic problem.
Yes.
Despite all the modern technology, everything, we can send a man to the moon, we still don't have a pill for like alcoholism.
Right.
The only thing that just about works is to hire Creator.
Absolutely. That's the only thing that works.
It's sad. It's sad, but that's just the way things are.
Yeah. And, and that's part of our reason for the faith-based approach. All of our curriculum, we are what we call a work-study program. During the day, our men and women, they go out and they work. We do contract work. In fact, we have a fair amount of the City of White House contract for, for your lawn care service. We do your mowing. We have other businesses, a remodel company, um, we have a thrift store downtown Troop. Our ladies have a cleaning service. We are bonded and insured for those businesses. So, our men and women work during the day and then between three and four o'clock, we break off. They come in, shower up, um, and then we start our academic portions of our program and we teach class in the evenings. Uh, and the men and women do their studies, which again, it's all based on curriculum from, from scripture to, um, restore that moral conscience and just a, a good code of conduct for, for life. So, those businesses are how we keep the doors open. Most of the people that come to us, they cannot afford to pay our program fees and we don't turn anybody away for a lack of ability to pay. And I don't send anybody a bill at the end of their twelve months either. So, we do that with a lot of donations from churches and, uh, friends of the ministry and things like that, charitable giving. So, so, yeah.
Mayor and council, the service that they provide to the city is bid out just like any other service that the city would use. And so, we're grateful to have such a great partner in New Creation Foundation. They do a great job for us. Their, their team is always, um, willing to help and, and just a great job for us, so.
Yeah, I remember the conversations spaced around that. The concern was, is it gonna be, you know, violent or sexual offenders involved? And it's not that category of, uh...
Right. We, we do not house any sex offenders. We're just not set up for it with our insurance policies and things like that. There are other, other places that do that, but we do not.
So there is a lot of overcrowding in the jails for drug-related offenses, people that are in there for long-term holding. Is there an opportunity for somebody to do like a, um, it, it's almost like a works program, but instead of going and for the trustees or the people that, uh, receive a little, level of inmate where they could be trusted to be on the outside?
Right.
Do you have people that are actually serving a term, but they're actually?
We, we do not. And because, because we're a residential program where they live in-house and they, they basically, everything that they do is governed under our supervision, just for obvious reasons, but, but that's interesting.
Yeah, I don't think there's a level of law enforcement, at least at the county level, that doesn't agree that they could do better on rehabilitation. There's just no funding for it.
There's no funding?
Yeah, there's no funding.
We're not really set up for it, uh, in the jail systems and, and because of how overcrowded it is. I know our officers are busy, uh, the city's busy, and so that's why organizations like New Creation exist.
Well, I'm glad you're there. And, uh, any questions from any of the rest of council? Yeah, thanks for coming up to White House and, uh, giving us a presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We have both officers. Oh, well, we're down to one again. Oh, we got them both again.
Now we're both.
Alright, so this takes us back to item D one, Officer Recognition, with Ruby Bahia, Bahia and Michael Zorio.
Correct, sir. I'll make him come up here. One of the great things that we have in, in White House that I love so much is we don't have a lot of crime and a lot of violence. Uh, and it's very thankful for that. And because of that, we don't have a lot of great big events that happen where we can give awards. But we had one recently in the last month. And actually, it didn't even originate in the city. It originated out in the county near the lake. So about a month ago, um, these two were responding to help Tyler with the shooting situation. And on the way out there, uh, they spotted a car traveling at a very high rate of speed. And so they stopped to be in. And I'll, I'll tell you, I've, I've watched and been involved in a lot of intense situations. And I watched their videos and they were top-notch twenty-year officers in the way that they were acting. They were professional, they were calm. There wasn't any freaking out like you would expect normal people to do. And, and this is not something, again, we're fortunate, we don't deal with every day. So I was very proud to see how they took control of the situation. They were very much in control, knew what to do. Uh, one of the guys had been shot in the leg, very close to an artery. And so their response to that was to get a tourniquet, put that on. And they actually had another person that was shot as well. Uh, it was not as severe. And they were able to get the, the bleeding into control and thankfully EMS was able to get there pretty quickly and help with it. And I'll tell you that, again, it's not something we deal with every day and their response was textbook. It was perfect. And so I just wanted to show how proud I am of what they did. And so, I'll come up here now. We don't have a lot of opportunities to give out awards, so I wanted to do this in front of everybody here, in front of y'all, to show our appreciation. So we're presenting two lifesaving awards because of their efforts, uh, during the situation. It says, uh, presented to Officer Zorio and Officer Bahina for exhibiting exceptional acts of humanity and courage as you came to the aid of a fellow human being who was suffered, suffering from a gunshot wound. This extraordinary performance of service in keeping with the highest traditions of law enforcement and brings great credit upon the officers and the White House Police Department is awarded today, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If you turn around and another one of the pictures. Again, we have some of the greatest officers around and, uh, just very proud of the work they do. They're just, I can't express how proud I think, how excited I am to have these, these two and all of them. They just do great work every day. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Robson. That takes us on to item E, Community Interest. We have some items on the list here. Mrs. Black, take it away, please.
Mayor and council, just a few items tonight. And the farmer's market started back up two Saturdays ago, I believe. And they, just as a reminder, they've moved down to one oh nine East Main. And we're thankful that the neighboring property owner has allowed them to really spread out, out there in the grassy area under the trees. So they really have a great, uh, area for shade and a lot more parking. So, if you came out when they were located here, I would encourage you to try there. I think you'll find a little bit more room and a little bit, uh, cooler weather these days, so. Uh, National Night Out is Tuesday, October fifth, at six P M. here at City Park. And so we're excited about that. The chief and the police department have done a lot of work to get that set up and we're excited to do our first kind of community-wide event this year. And COVID nineteen, we can se- continue to see a high rate of cases in Smith County. Um, right now, I think we have three employees out with positive cases, so we are still feeling some of that strain operationally, but nothing too severe yet. As a reminder, we do continue to have our lobby closed because we do still continue to have some of our front office staff, um, suffering the effects, so. And until further notice, that lobby will remain closed. The Chamber of Commerce is planning their reverse raffle this year after having to take last year off, so that's coming up. And I don't know the date. Do you remember that?
October ninth, Saturday after.
So if you're interested in attending, uh, the Chamber of Commerce has tickets currently for sale for that. And then lastly, the Youth Community Council. Uh, we have been working closely with the school district to get that up and running there. And the process now of seeking applications from interested students for serving on that. So, um, I think they're gonna put the deadline out till maybe next week sometime, so we're excited about the interest there. Uh, I've met with a couple of students and I think we have some great, great candidates that are really excited about it. Uh, and I think they'll, they're destined for great things, so. And that's a lot happening.
I saw on the way home today, um, on the corner of the Loop and one ten, heading south, there was a Jeep that had a wheel cover on the back of the Jeep that it said, "White House Farmer's Market." Like somebody had made a cover for that for their Jeep. I was like, man, this thing is taking off. There's, there's, uh, swag out there and, uh, branded stuff that you can get, so.
Seems like it's getting bigger every weekend, too.
That's all put on by a great group of volunteers. They just kind of took it and ran with it. We just, we just said yes and here's a place for you and, uh, they've done a great job putting that together and continuing that for quite a while now, so.
I know I'm not supposed to show favoritism for a specific vendor, but there's somebody there selling peach salsa that is crazy. I ate the whole jar. And I rented a chips. I drank the last of it. Yeah, it's good stuff. Uh, anything else to add in the?
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, we're really appreciative to the orthodontist who owns that property. I talked to her last week.
Doctor Rul- Rulins?
Yeah, nice, nice person. I told her thank you, you know, on my benefit. I wish we could send her a card or something, maybe a thank you.
Some peach salsa.
I mean, just a, and, and I tell you, let me tell you what else. She keeps her lot immaculate. It's just beautiful, you know? So, appreciate her. Will there be karaoke at the National Night Out?
I don't believe so.
Ah, thanks. Okay.
People might go in. They might go from out.
Can't get them all, man.
Alright, anything else to add on item E here? Well, that takes us into item F, Public Forum. I don't see anybody signed up to speak. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that takes us to item G, the Consent Agenda. So, uh, the only item we have on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous council meeting held on August sixteenth. So, knowing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alright, the agenda, consent agenda is confirmed. So on to item H, Other Action Items, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Public Hearings. Number one is discuss and action, discussion and action on filing the vacancy of council place two. We have a staff report in your packet, council, for your review consideration. I'm gonna start the conversation on this one, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, Councilmember Cardwell resigned, um, in August as she moved out of the city limits. And so we need to fill her vacancy in accordance with the Home Rule Charter, um, which states that you will appoint someone to fill the vacancy. The city staff has developed an application. It's the same application that we used when we filled place one last year. And so staff is recommending that we put that information out on our website and the city newsletter and leave that open until your next meeting for your consideration.
That application wound up getting to Zach, right? Do we want to look at it? Maybe alter it a little bit? I'm just kidding. Zach is a good, Zach is a great one. Yeah, I like the application as presented and I, uh, appreciate the effort of, of allowing the people that want to put their name in a hat, you know, to, to fill out the application. It gives us more insight than just a name. So, yeah, I think we should post it everywhere that we can and encourage people to step up.
Yep.
Alright, anything else on that? So I guess we need a, a motion to follow, to go forward with that, right? Okay. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I have one question. You said the next meeting. Do we have one again later this month?
Yes. Twenty eighth.
Do we need to leave that open a little longer or, I mean, just because you're looking at less than two weeks turnaround time on that?
Why don't we?
Do you feel that's sufficient?
Why don't we leave it open and we'll just put it back on the next agenda for you to either appoint or extend the deadline? And that way we can kind of see what's going on.
So when that last meeting, though?
Ours will be in November, that first meeting in November.
Yes, yes, yes.
So my concern is, is because of finalization.
I don't think it'll be out till Friday.
Yeah, 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 that's true. Yeah, I thought we were on a tighter timeline for you, but that's the budget. I'm thinking of the budget cycle. So, yeah, I like that. Keep it open.
We'll just, we'll give you the option.
Yeah, that'd be good. Dragging that a little bit longer. Alright, do they need to, do they need to put that wording in the form of a motion?
I think staff direction is fine for that item. I think we need a motion.
Okay. Alright, so that takes us to item H two, uh, discussion and approval for resolution R twenty-one dash zero nine one four dash zero one, Grant for Video Surveillance. We have a staff report for this item two. Oh, we have a presenter. Awesome.
Mayor and council, Robert Pearson. Let's see, this grant resolution is regarding the grant that we were awarded, uh, to replace the camera system. So, the current one's eighteen years old and just as fantastic as you think it would be after eighteen years. Uh, this new system's we thirty-two cameras and accessible from your cell phones. And the, uh, financial impact is fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars with no Apple four matching phones.
So that's, that's all grant money, right?
All grant.
Oh, okay.
It'd be covered a hundred percent by the grant.
Well, with that being said.
That's fantastic.
It's a tough decision.
Actually, I was gonna ask you, do we think, how many cameras currently?
Currently, we have twelve that are recorded and those are inside. Outside, there's eleven, but they don't work.
So is that a combination?
So, these are all the original, uh, coax cables that were put in for dispatch that need to be manned and watched. So after eight hours currently, they're not manned and there's only one week of recording availability on the interior cameras and one on the outside parking lot.
The reason I ask is do we need to look at thirty-two, sounds great, but if we start adding to fire department?
Right, so this program is going to be, uh, IP network-based. The grants for thirty-two, which would replace the actual city, but it's all in conjunction where you can add the gun range, the fire department, the baseball field, those will just be a separate situation and they'll all be accessible by laptops or cell phones for the staff.
Do we want to look at doing that? Would we save money if we were, because let's be honest, I think gun range is a little newer, but still, you've got the splash pad, the, the park, so forth. Or you, would you, would it be cost-efficient to look at adding more on top of that grant?
Now, I'm speaking to Global, uh, who won out the, uh, the bidding process. Well, you know, when we're researching it, it doesn't require any of the internal landlines that we had inside the PD. These are all gonna be, it just needs some type of network connection, so. I don't know if you can pull it off of, you know, the water department or whatever, but it seems to be pretty cost-effective, really, because it's, they come in sixteen camera units. So this one's gonna be for two, which is the thirty-two, so everything that comes in this, this setup is gonna be on a sixteen-camera base, like, set, so you could, you know, move on. They don't necessarily all have to go like say for the city, but you can move and match, is what they were saying, um, with how this is, how it's available.
We use Global and the same style system and it's real easy to add on. The, the cost is the DVR. The cameras are pretty expensive.
And this DVR system isn't going to be like, you know, housed on-site. It's gonna be on the web, so.
I just didn't know if we need to expand while we're looking at it.
We may, we may take a look at that because there's areas right here that we need to cover. So we do already have cameras out at the sports complex. They're not the greatest quality, but we do have camera footage out there, so. But we'll, we'll take a look at it before.
Would, I, I mean, I'm, use the grain. Would, I mean, I'm, use the grant, I know we're, we're tied to certain language in that grant, but I'm sure if we expand, that's within the grant threshold for us to be able to put some of our own money into expanding.
Right, yeah, I don't know that the Cog would care if we wanted to add on beyond what was already done and cover that cost.
Sounds good.
I just hate to purchase a system and then us needing to add to it in the near future and just be out more.
And I do remember when I asked him what the max was on this bid that he gave us and it was somewhere around like ninety cameras, so.
That's good, yeah.
Pearson, can you talk about, I know early in this grant process, we heard that funds from the Department of Justice are going to be extremely limited this year. Can you talk about?
So it was roughly three hundred thousand was available, and they were cut down by over three hundred thousand, I believe, because of COVID. There's only thirteen cities, I'm sorry, eleven cities and two counties that were awarded monies during this process and we were, I don't know, three out of thirteen, so.
Excellent, well done.
That's awesome.
It's highly competitive and so that's impressive that you were able to.
Yes.
To get.
Well, when you have a secret weapon like Jennifer, things happen.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, does that, does that require additional staff direction in addition?
That will need a motion.
Okay, so that will need a motion. And just as a part of that, you go ahead and research the additional cameras in the background. So any more discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion on approval of Resolution R twenty-one dash zero niner one four dash zero one, Grant for Video Surveillance.
All right, we got a motion with a niner, here a second. I'll second. All right, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. Let's go on to H three, Discuss and Consider Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding between the Tyler Junior, between the Tyler Junior College, Center for Local Government Studies, and the City of White House for Internships and Research Supporting Local Government.
Mayor and Council, several months ago, I was at a city manager's luncheon and Professor Wilbanks, since he's here tonight, attended with some of his colleagues to kind of introduce the program that they were looking to start and partnerships that they were looking to start with cities in the area to do internship programs for their students. So I was excited to hear that, we've been trying to start similar programs with UT Tyler. And to hear that we had some support from Tyler Junior College and some, some real interest on moving that program forward was exciting. So I, along with a couple of other city managers, went to TJC a couple of months ago and met with, again, Professor Wilbanks and some of his team and really kind of talked about where we saw the program headed and how we could make sure that it's mutually beneficial to both the student and the cities that were participating and that we really didn't want it to be a student showing up to file every day, which is what these kind of internships can sometimes turn into be. So we wanted to make sure that we had some clearly defined goals on both sides to make sure, again, that it was beneficial for everyone. So over the past several months, we've had several meetings and worked pretty closely to kind of iron out the details. And the memorandum of understanding is before you, but I kind of wanted to go into more of what the actual benefit to the city will be in our, in our case. So they've identified a student that I'm going to meet with on Friday and will start on Monday and with the hopes of developing and conducting a community-wide survey for our city. And it'll be based off some other community-wide surveys. And that was something I actually obtained a quote for heading into the next fiscal year to get a baseline of how our citizens really feel about city services, how well we're doing, how well we may not be doing, and what the importance of each of those services are. And the quote from a, a separate company was about twenty-five thousand dollars to conduct that survey. So when I proposed this to TJC and Center for Local Government Studies and outlined, I think it's something that would provide a great research opportunity for a student and give us some great baseline data and something that we could do maybe every other year moving forward to see how we measure up. And so that's the MOU that you have before you, again, we have a student starting next week and you have a timeline, a preliminary timeline in your PAC showing kind of what each of those steps are. And we kind of, I kind of wanted to take it, the approach of if they were writing a paper, how would they line that out? Because there's a pretty lengthy paper due at the end of this for them, so we can kind of work on it step by step. And so we're really excited to get started on it.
What course credit is this for them?
If you'd like, Professor Wilbanks, thank you that I really answered that for us. I don't need to put you on the spot. That's what happens if you show up.
Sure you're used to talking to crowds of people, welcome professor.
First of all, thank y'all for entertaining this idea, but we have been looking for an area that we could use our expertise and I particularly have a passion for local government and I think that's where the real action occurs. See where citizens meet with their government more with the local government than they do in a lot of other levels of government. Maybe there's a lot more satisfaction there, too, I hope. But in our department, we have several people that have expertise in this area, they have some training there, have conducted surveys in the past, but we also want to work with our students. This is a three-hour credit course that the student will receive credit for. We're in the process of adding this to our degree plan so that all of our government majors, for all the students who are government majors, will participate in this course after they've gone through the other courses that we have. We have, actually have four different government courses that we teach at TJC. And so we want both of those things, we want to emphasize the research part of that and we want the experience that the student will gain in this. This is actually labeled as an academic cooperative where we want them to get real-world experience because hopefully, like this particular student, I already talked to him, his goal is to start working in, in local government, that's an area. We find, kind of be candid, typically for political scientists, local government is not the hot topic for them. They'd rather talk about elections and other things. So for us, though, this is an exciting area that, that we want to get into. We have a lot of support from our administration, the president, the provost, and my deputy. The provost came and was going to meet with them and I thought they'd be there for about ten minutes and they stayed the entire time. So a lot of interest is there, very pleased to see that White House is interested in that and I have to compliment your city manager. She is so organized that, she, I think she doesn't have to work for us already, so we appreciate that. All these charts and things that you produce ahead of time, but anyway, the student will get three hours' credit for directly answering your question.
Okay, it's a two thousand and double course, like a second, second-year sophomore type course?
It is, it's twenty-three eighty-nine is actually the course number under the state, so yes.
Yeah, that would be great experience for them, hopefully they all still want to work for city government on the other side of this. I can't make any promises.
If they're in White House, I'm sure they would want to. We are, I, I will tell you, we were talking, as Ms. Black mentioned, we're talking to some other cities, but we're real pleased to start with White House.
Yeah.
I don't know how I like to be first.
That's right.
She jumped up first.
If there's any students left over, they can go to other cities, that sounds fair. Any questions for the professor?
Sounds like a, a great benefit to the student, the college, and also the city, so I appreciate it all around.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Mayor and Council, one more thing that I will add, the, the only cost to the city would be anything to implement the actual program for the internship. So in this case, it would be any mailers that we would need to do for the survey or any kind of printed material. And I do think we have some great partners in Tyler Junior College that are open to maybe other programs for a spring internship or maybe next fall. Well, maybe it'll be a different topic or a different project, so we'll just kind of.
Would that be a per-household mailer?
I don't, I don't know what that would be yet, and that's something we kind of want the student to work through is what's an appropriate sample size? And how do you determine who you send that to? And we'll kind of, kind of go through all those facets of it as we work through the internship.
Yeah, that's great. I'm excited, I'm excited for you. You kind of willed this into existence and found a partner suitable for it, that's great. All right, Council, any more questions on this topic? If not, you have a, an item for action in front of you there? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the MOU between Tyler Junior College, the Center for Local Government Studies, and the City of White House for the Internships and Research Supporting Local Government.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Welcome to the family. All right, item H four, Discussion and Approval of Wildlife Abatement Contract. Is this, is this beavers?
Yes.
All right, we're talking about beavers. Take it away, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, as a result of some flooding in the area, I'm not sure when it started, but for several years, the city has contracted with an individual to do wildlife abatement as a matter, as a part of our stormwater management plan. This individual has continued this contract for several years and notified us when we were talking about this contract coming back up that he feels that most of the nuisance beavers along one ten north have been abated. And so we've been paying about a five thousand dollar a year contract and so for this next year, he's reducing that down to three thousand. He offered to do two thousand just for beaver abatement on the south side of town, but we felt it was important to have him continue to check the area and abate any nuisances that may arise on the north side of town, so he's agreed to do that. Normally, I wouldn't bring this small of a contract before you, however, I do think because of the potential for damage if this contract isn't continued, that it's worthwhile to bring it to you in a public meeting. This is also, the one ten north abatement that we do was part of a study and a recommendation that was done in twenty nineteen from Adams Engineering when we had some flooding in that area. So that's another reason why we just want to bring it before you, make sure you have eyes on it and, and let the public know that we do continue that service.
So the level of flooding that we experienced when we get, what was that, eight inches of rain in twenty, thirty minutes? Is that, was, that wasn't the result of any kind of obstruction to water flow through there, right?
No, sir, not that we found. So this individual has continued to monitor that area and we did not find, he did not find any evidence that it was due to any kind of obstruction. That area that flooded along one ten north the first day of school is in a floodplain and is known to flood, prone to flood, will always be known and prone to flooding. Once you are located in a floodplain, you're required to have flood insurance for that reason. So this is just to ensure that we're doing everything we can.
To keep it from going beyond the flood.
To keep it from going beyond the floodplain and help mitigate and reduce the chances of it flooding. We can't do away with them forever, but it does help, so.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
We deal with a lot of these same type scenarios at some of our sites in the waterways and it is very wise to keep it going.
You got beavers in the land?
They can, they can be on you real quick before you even know it.
You know, in everyday life, you just don't think about beavers, you know.
I think about them every time I drop by there now.
But I mean, you know, they're, they're real animals, so. How many, did, do you know how many were, they even caught?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight beavers?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. Okay.
All right, it's amazing. Kids for kids or something.
Yeah.
All right, that's item number four, so any more questions on the Wildlife Abatement Contract? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the continuation of the Wildlife Abatement Contract for twenty-one and twenty-two fiscal year in the amount of three thousand dollars.
A second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, that takes us to item H five, Consider Future Agenda Items. Do we have anything currently on the books for future agenda items?
The biggest item of the next meeting, Mayor and Council, will be a budget amendment for the current fiscal year. We need to get that closed out and cleaned up before the fiscal year ends, just some changes, anything that you may have approved during the year, any overages under, any of those types of things, we'll get those cleaned up at the next meeting, that's the biggest. And then we will do an update on parks signage.
Okay, awesome. Given that, anything else to add to the next agenda from Council? All right, well, that's the end of that. That takes us to item I, Executive Session, we have no executive session on the agenda schedule for today, so we will not be doing item J, which is to reconvene. That takes us to item K, Adjourned. The time is now six forty-two. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.